All right, I'd like to convene our regular meeting of the school board of the Broner Area School District, start with a roll call to establish quorum. Joe?
Here.
Corby?
Here.
I'm here. Meredith?
Here.
Good, this is good, I'm remembering everybody's names, this is good. Chris?
Here.
Juan Carlos?
Here.
All right, we have a quorum. Has the meeting been properly noticed?
Yes, it has.
That is fantastic. All right, and Juan Carlos, do you mind reading our equity statement?
Do me my acknowledgement. Yes. In the Broner Area School District, our mission is that each student will acquire the knowledge and skills necessary to achieve their personal goals, thrive in a diverse global society, and lead a healthy, self-fulfilling life. To meet this mission, the Broner Area School District will ensure that every individual has access to educational, social, and emotional support in meaningful value and affirmed in their unique identities and experiences. We acknowledge that inequities and power dynamics exist in our system, so it's that some individuals on the basis of their identities face barriers to accessing the opportunities they need to experience success. In acknowledgements of such, the Broner Area School District is committed to disrupting these systems of connectedness.
And now on to the Ho-Chunk land acknowledgement.
There are currently 12 tribal nations who call Wisconsin home, with the Ho-Chunk nation being the primary group living around Madison. No matter where you are in the state, you're on the ancestral land of the tribal nation as we begin our meeting, we honor the lands upon which we stand.
All right, thank you. I will accept a motion to approve the agenda as written. So, Corby, you go first. Do I have a second? Second for Juan Carlos. All those in favor, put with an "I"?
"I".
Any opposed? All right, the agenda has been adopted. All right, let's kick things off right and recognize some staff.
Thank you. Again, welcome to the regular meeting for Broner School District. And as always, when we have the opportunity, we're extremely excited to be able to celebrate the amazing staff that comprise the Broner School District. And today, can't there be a better way to begin our meeting than giving congratulations to Mr. Eric Anderson and his colleague Jeff Krueger. Both have been selected for the 2025 Wisconsin Music Educated Association Community Service Award. They received this award in recognition for their outstanding work with the Broner Area Concert Band, a program that has brought music and community together in extraordinary ways. We all know Eric Anderson and his outstanding work with the Broner Area High School Music Department. His colleague Jeff Krueger is not only a software designer at Epic, but also a phenomenal musician who has dedicated countless hours to VHS music for many years. Jeff serves as our concert accompanist, coach for young musicians, pianist, and mainstage programmer for the school musical, generously sharing his time and talents with our students. The Community Service Award is given to those who consistently share their time, talents, or resources to strengthen music education. This year's award winners will be recognized as part of the 2025 Wisconsin State Music Conference at the President's Welcome Reception, oh my goodness, President, okay, on Wednesday, October 29th, 2025, from 7:00 to 9:30 at the Broner Terrace Convention Center in Madison, Wisconsin. Please join us in congratulating Eric and Jeff for this well-deserved recognition of their incredible impact on our music in our schools and beyond. Thank you.
Speech.
That was excellent.
Thank you guys so much, we're so proud of you guys, that's really, really awesome.
Thank you, and we could not do what we do with the community part of the group without the support of the school district and all of you, so thank you for your part in making that happen as well, we appreciate it.
I will say, I say this all the time when music comes up, as someone who's not musically inclined, I come and I watch the concerts here and I'm just completely blown away every time. It's like the greatest thing I've ever seen, it's really, really, the level of quality is awesome, so.
Thank you so much, we have amazing students.
Yeah.
Very grateful to be here, I'm lucky to have such a great place to teach.
All right. All right, moving on to some more recognitions.
All right. Next, because they would love to be put front and center on a big screen, but it's kind of funny, so we're gonna do it. First, we have Joe Haynes. Joe Haynes is the, congratulations for your dedication to professional development and service as a school board member, has earned recognition of WASB member recognition program. Each year, the Wisconsin Associated School Board honors board members who demonstrate a strong commitment to growth by participating in WASB events and activities. Joe, your efforts have earned you a Level 1 Award for attending Wisconsin Associated School Board's training opportunities focused on improvement, improving student achievement and public education. Joe will be publicly recognized for his achievement at the upcoming WASB Ball Regional Meeting. Congratulations to Joe. All right, and the honors keep coming for the Broner School District Board. Next, we are, congratulations to Mr. Corby White for being honored with the Urban League President's Award for Rising Stars for its community activism at the local, national, and local levels. This award is an honor presented by the Urban League of Greater Madison, President and CEO to recognize individuals who have made exceptional contributions to the Urban League's mission to be, excuse me, and to the broader Madison community. This award celebrates those who demonstrate outstanding leadership, commitment to equity, and impact on service that uplifts underserved populations and advances civil rights and equal opportunity. Congratulations to Mr. Corby White.
All right, well, thank you guys for making me feel so small, that's great. Excellent, all right, why don't we move on to the superintendent's report?
All right, is that a little, turn it back, go to the business department.
All right, not quite as long this time. We had an interesting conversation today that if, I believe state law says if we didn't pass the vote at the annual meeting, we would have had to ice this presentation and come up with a different plan, so we're thankful for those votes. We're here tonight to get the board's permission to do some short-term borrowing. I'm gonna walk us through a real brief history and then I'm actually gonna turn things over to Pete to get in some more of the technical portion of what's going on with our ask for '25-'26, and then we're gonna ask for a vote. As a reminder to the board and the community, this is not new to the Broner Area School District, and for that matter, is not new to many school districts in the state of Wisconsin. Again, we are carrying a very healthy fund balance, but when you have $800 million of expenditures on an annual basis, and 80% of that is payroll, we have pretty much a steady churn of the money that Pete and his team need to essentially pay the bills and make the payroll on a monthly basis, and our cash does not come in as steadily as it goes out during the year. So, we have borrowed money from the past on a short-term basis. We did a five-year history and a snapshot here. We made it in '23-'24 and did not need to borrow any money, but then we came forward and asked the board for permission to buy another asset that is still on the books for our school district in the form of a couple of land purchases that took place over the last couple of years. One being the property on the place in Rome, the other one that's on King James Way. The King James Way property turned into a blessing because we were able to get an onsite clinic on district property and were able to just kind of shuffle some of those deck chairs to do that. So, I'm actually gonna turn things over to Pete now and have him kind of walk you through some of the more technical aspects as far as his estimates of what we have going on with cash flow and so forth.
Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, as Chad was saying, I'll just reiterate a point on here, it's all about the timing of this. We do have a balanced budget, we do have a healthy fund balance, as he said, it all just depends on the timing. Like the first bullet point, we're talking about, we get our, most of our money is coming from our tax levy, and we don't get our first tax levy payment until six months or seven months into the fiscal year, and we finally get our last one 14 months after the fiscal year at start. So, we, it's, it's just a timing issue that we end up having every year, and like as Chad had said, not all school districts, but several school districts have this, have this issue too. The chart that you see, or the table that you see up on the right, it kind of evidences our point here, when you look at the expenditure column, and for the most part, the expenses go pretty steady. Yeah, there are some months where it's a couple billion dollars more, but if you look at the revenue column, you see we get a big chunk of it in, you know, January and February, and then the following August, we, we get some. And that's where our issue comes in, is that expenses column is adding up faster than our revenues column. So, that's why we end up having to, having to borrow. In fact, our last bullet point here says our shortfall on here would be just under $7 million. It doesn't show it on this slide, but the next slide you'll be able to see, and we do break this down, actually all the way down to every day of where we think our cash flow, our cash flow will be, so. Okay, yeah, and here's like a week-by-week breakdown that I just took where some of the low levels were, where we could see where the money would be in and out. So, our low point would be sometime right before our payroll on January 16th. Right now, this shows that we get our, our tax levy money on January 15th, but that's not gonna be quite enough money to, or the timing of it won't. It may or may not work out necessarily for us to get that money in time to cover all of it. So, our shortfall will be just about $7 million is what our, what our guesstimate is going to be for the cash flow shortage this year. So, as I said before, the projected low point is gonna be in the middle of January, where it's gonna be about $6.95 million. Now, there's a couple of options for short-term borrowing. We can use a short-term note, or we can use a letter of credit, or we can use a combination of both of them. And the difference between the short-term note is we get all the money upfront, and we're able to take that money and invest it. So, yes, we're paying interest on it, but we're also earning interest on it too. So, it's kind of a cash-in, cash-out at all, all at the same time. Whereas a letter of credit, you take that out from, like, in this case, it'd be Lakewood Bank here in town, and you take that out as you need that. So, the letter of credit interest rate is higher, it's gonna be quite a bit higher than the, the short-term note, which our rates out there, actually, they're estimating our rates are gonna be pretty close to what our borrowing, or, sorry, our investing rate is, so it's, hopefully it should work out to be. Cash flow control issue out there. We are also going to be entering into a line of credit with Lakewood Bank, just in case that $7 million shortfall ends up being a little bit more on that. And Jeff and I will come back up here again in another month or two to get permission to get the line of credit going out there. The third bullet point on here too is we are gonna be asking for authorization to borrow $7.5 million on short-term loan for '25-'26. All we have, now it's up for discussion and then the vote now.
Question from the board at all, I think we went through this before, I wanted to make sure, in particular, the public knew why we had to borrow some money on a short-term basis.
As per the previous slide, I'll recall that this is something that we've historically done every year. No, no questions right now, we'll.
To get back to a point where we're not doing short-term borrowing, we'd need to make another, you know, $70 million deposit in fund now.
Somewhere around there, maybe, maybe not quite that much, but about there.
And as our, Pete reminds me of this often, as our expenditures go up with the rate inflation, that it can immediately, with what we had in fund balance, also creep up as well. But we've, we've been doing a very nice job of having 1%, 2%, 3% money left at the end of a fiscal year. Again, we would not want to be the other way, we'd be breaking some school board policy if Pete and I turned in a budget every year that was overspent, and that's not the case. So, we fully expect this budget, again, that we're in right now. Pete tracks this closely almost on a daily basis, that we could see $2 or $3 million in fund balance deposit at the end of this year.
Any other questions?
We'll hold on this app for public comment, but thank you very much.
Speaking of public comment, do we have any public comments? Perfect. All right, so then moving into board action. Our first board action is to vote on the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing. So, this is a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing amount not to exceed 7.5 million between the issuance of tax revenue anticipation promissory notes and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes program. A motion from Juan Carlos, second?
Second.
Second from Corby, any further discussion at all? None, all in favor, signify with an "I"?
"I".
And any opposed? So, the resolution carries. Now, we'll have a second reading of our policy in GC6, which is our annual work plan. You should all have access to this, but the gist of the language was to switch, so that it just says we have an annual work plan, not that we do it every October, as that sometimes is impractical. Does anybody have any questions about this second reading? Okay, so we'll entertain a motion to vote on board policy GC6, the annual work plan, entertain a motion. A motion from Joe, a second?
Second.
Second from Chris. No further discussion, then all in favor, signify with an "I"?
"I".
Any opposed? All right, the policy language carries. All right. Moving from there into OE2. Oh, I'm sorry, annual work plan, trust, skip everything tonight, you're good. Okay. So, now we're looking to vote on our annual work plan, you should all have this in the digital files as well, I'll hold it up. This is just a working plan that we've created in consultation with the admin team, when best to review particular operational expectations as well as results policies. And then there are other areas for board work in there as well, GC policies for review, and superintendent review. Any discussion on this, questions? Been over it a little bit. And this is a living document, so it'll change from time to time, but you should chart the course for us the next year or so. So, I'll accept a motion on accepting this annual work plan. GC6, all right, I have a motion from Chris, a second?
Second.
Second from Meredith, I feel a bit like an auctioneer. All those in favor, signify with an "I"?
"I".
Any opposed? We have an annual work plan, let's do that.
As we get into item D, especially some, some that there, we're gonna ask if a board member would be willing to make a felony amendment to the way it's, it shouldn't say approval, it should be vote on OE2 in emergency monitoring plan, not approval.
Okay.
We'll do that first right now.
Yeah. So, we have a motion to amend the meeting minutes to read that this, number seven, sub-D, sub-I, reads a vote on operational expectation two rather than approval of operational expectation two. Does a motion for that change?
I'll do it.
I have a motion from Joe, second?
Second.
Second from Juan Carlos. All those in favor, signify with "I"?
"I".
Any opposed? All right, the minutes have been amended. All right, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, thank you. All right. So, our first OE of the, of the calendar season is OE2, which is the emergency superintendent succession. The purpose of this OE, while short, is important as it establishes a chain of command for emergency procedures to make sure that the safety and security of the Broner School District and everyone comprised of such is carried out from a leadership perspective in the event the superintendent is unable to fulfill those duties for, for reasons, and then a plan of successors who would take on that, that lead in emergency situation. Very rarely has this happened, I can think of a, but to give an example, when this thing I, I, they have a medical procedure in July with, in which space, like, that deep of a medical procedure, there needs to be someone who's responsible for the safety and security of the district in that situation. Our deputy superintendent arose to the occasion and led, and from all accounts, did a better board meeting than I had, so. I don't know what to say about that, but I guess, I guess it happened. But again, first, thank you to Chad for stepping in on those days, but those are one of the examples of why we have OE2. As part of the, as part of the information though, and as I tried to put in the executive summary, there are aspects of OE2, while they're not directly tied to succession plan, I thought it was good for our board and thus our community to know and understand, and that's some of the modifications that anyone in succession plan would need to know and understand in terms of our safety and security processes. I'm not gonna go too deep in there because on, at the very next meeting on October 6th, our safety and security update is an agenda item for the board, so it'll be far more detailed, but I also wanted to explain why this was placed in the emergency succession plan, because it's not just about naming people to be successors in this space, it's about the proper training and the understanding of systems that need to happen to ensure in the event of a succession of, of people out of the district who are not able to fulfill those duties, that the safety and security first to use the staff are still, rise to the forefront. So, so any questions there about the, the new, especially Navig8360 and our, and our processes for our, our safety? Again, the full presentation for that is on October 6th, so I'm being very high-level right, right now. Also, as part of the presentation, I did want to present simultaneously with the report the opportunity to adjust one of the indicators, that being, because it was, one of the indicators was written very specifically to naming the Broner Central Office and especially two staff members within the Broner Central Office as having access to the succession plan. As we've talked about with property purchases, we have, in essence, two central offices, central office Broner, central office Pittsburgh, and that information was not a part of the current indicator, so I did put a recommendation for adjustment for that indicator within the talking points itself, and like, simultaneously, as we look at the potential approval of the OE, also potential approval of the indicator language and adjustment to allow for both central offices to be recognized, and knowing that we have set up the same security systems in, in both places for, for any type of emergency that, that, that may happen. In terms of the, so, any questions about the indicator? In terms of the monitoring report itself, beginning with indicator one, all criteria has been met from the perspective of the superintendent, I know there's a board, board vote on this, in terms of succession documents mailed to the Broner School District principals, the organizational chart linked to all our websites per protocol, as well as the service teams. Each of the executive administrative assistants has documented posted in our office, so it's not just the digital version of it, we have hard copies voted in, in those places as well. And indicator two, that is where I did ask for an adjustment to the indicator, but if we're looking at the evidence from last year, all the protocol was in place of the VSD organizational chart being linked to the service departments and addressed at the weekly cabinet meetings, as well as the superintendent leadership team does personnel updates, and we go through any planned actions to make sure that the succession plan stays in, in full compliance. And under indicator three, we did receive an email confirmation through President Murphy that there were no lapses in the protocol where, where no lapses were reported in protocol for reporting when we would go into OE2 per, per policy. So, with that, I'm gonna turn this back over to the board of ed, after working through the first, this first new version of the OE2 monitoring board and maybe some push and pull, and maybe personal mid-lag, because I actually like this one better. So, thank you for working, getting us through this space as well.
All right. Let's open it up, if anybody has any questions, comments, thoughts on OE2? I think I'll just reiterate again that this isn't, you know, as simple and straightforward as it looks, because, you know, not just for security and safety, there's planning that goes on year-round. So, yeah. And I have done a great job of making sure that we'll be eager to get Jen back. By mispronouncing every word possible, skipping motions here and there and everywhere. So much for my grand ambitions of taking over. So, without further discussion, I'll accept, well, I'll say this sentence first, and then I'll accept a motion. Members of the board have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for OE2, and I will now accept a motion to accept and approve the report as presented. I have a motion from Meredith?
Second.
A second from Chris. Any further questions or discussion?
Can I just ask, we still do accepting, the motion being accepting the report as presented, even though we changed away from it being presented with a conclusion? We want to change the motion to be, accept the report as, you know, meeting expectations or something like that, just to match how we're doing the monitoring now?
I think that's a smart notice, I agree. Shall we redo?
Can we, sorry, I want to make sure we capture this.
So, we'll read.
Accept the report as meeting.
Met expectations.
Meeting expectations are relevant.
Yeah.
The termination is.
Okay, so.
That makes sense?
I'll try this again. All right, we have received and discussed the superintendent's monitoring report for OE2. I will now accept a new motion to accept the report as having met expectations as presented, so that we can begin this discussion, we've already had a discussion. So, I'll accept a motion to accept the report as having met expectations for OE2. I have a motion from Meredith?
Second.
Second from Corby this time. Any further questions or discussion? Going twice, all those in favor signify with an "I"?
"I".
"I", any opposed? All right, the OE report is accepted having met expectations.
Just for clarification, that's simultaneously approved, the indicator or doesn't?
No, we can do that separately. Do we have specific language to look at?
Yeah, put it in yellow, while it's not shown.
My question about the indicator, when it's, it's not changing it like substantively, it's just, you know, tweaking it. I think, if I remember correctly, I thought we kind of gave that authority to you without having to come to the board for, you know, jumping, because it's, it's, the substance of it is the same.
Same, correct, yeah, just the locations.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think that that's something that would require board approval, as opposed to just bringing it to our attention, and if we had any objection, we could.
Okay.
I like that, but.
I think that's an excellent point. I think we should have a discussion on this if we want to, but really, otherwise, we're just signifying if it's reasonable or not.
And I think as we move forward though, if there's anything where it has to be tweaked, it'd be just for a, a language, but it's not changing really the substance of the indicator.
The reasonableness.
No, the substance, I mean, the substance of the indicator isn't actually changed. If you, if it's a new indicator... Um, if you, if it's a new indicator or an indicator that is, you know, asking for different information, then we would approve it, but I think for this situation, it would just be at the superintendent's discretion.
Would make sure that I mark it as such in the report though, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that being said, I don't think we need to have a vote on this, but if everybody wants to take a second to read through the proposed language that's linked, um, in the OE two report, it's highlighted in yellow on our reports. My only question would be if you need to even mention the separate offices, and just saying the district office reception areas is enough?
I purposely, I did that because of the, I want to make sure that we continue to elevate Pittsburgh as a, as a great municipality.
Great, yeah. Seems reasonable to me. Does anybody else have any questions on this?
Uh, my only, just clarification, so even though, um, there isn't a substantive change, it's still will be highlighted, uh, meaning, it's just that we don't have to formally approve. But I think it's still important for, to be properly meaning so that we can all generally agree that it's not substantive.
Yeah, I think that's.
Theoretically, if we thought it wasn't, we could say, no, this is something we need to vote on.
Discuss.
Because I'm just thinking back to when we approved these indicators, we were so nitpicky of every single word, that I wish now we had applied the, this doesn't change the substantive meaning of the indicator standard.
So I think the, the thing here is we've got some suggestive changes. Does this look substantive to anybody?
No.
All right, moving on. Perfect. All right, so now I've got to figure out how to move on without skipping the next thing. Okay, so I'm going to move on to board updates then. Uh, board update, OE planning updates. Dr. Clarity, any updates for Fall WASTA?
Yes, thank you. Uh, so, uh, just finished the WASTA conference, uh, that which was Wednesday and Thursday and the morning of Friday of last week, uh, which included also the state of the, state of education from Dr. Dr. Underly, as well as a, uh, grounding presentation in partnership with UW from Dean Haddie from the Department, Department of Education of the UW, University. I think some of the bigger things that, especially from my, my seat on the legislative committee that, um, I don't want us to get caught off guard on, but it seemed to be catching traction at the legislative level are, is a second component of Act twenty in the form of Act twenty math, uh, which is at the, it potentially could come to a vote as early as in the next couple, couple of weeks. It's not that we are, don't want to continue to focus on high pollution of math, that my concern was following what we saw from Act twenty from language arts, funding, lack of, lack of funding, and then the unfunded mandates that went along with that, what this could mean as far as budget ramifications, as well as impact on staff who are already doing, you know, really, really dynamic work. So, uh, I had to put into a space something I don't have the resources, but we were just kind of getting a deeper understanding of this proposal being on the table. Uh, and I don't know yet what the momentum of is, I don't know how quickly it'll come to legislative vote, but wanted to make our board and thus our community aware of that was one of my biggest takeaways from the legislative component of, of the, of the work there. Uh, in terms of, of personal learning and learning brought, brought by their team, it might as well have been an AI conference, because that's the focus of each educational leader in, in our spaces, how, uh, not just understanding the tools of AI, but how are we, what is our philosophy and beliefs, how are we relying into, uh, the mission and vision of, of our district, but all, but most importantly, we have to keep in partnership, uh, side by side with our staff, because ultimately, that's, that's where it's implemented, because that's where the magic of education happens. So really thinking about all the strategies of how to make sure that we are not handing our staff, uh, thoughts and ideas, but partnering with our staff and bringing AI to life, uh, moving forward. So mo- most of the strategies revolve around there. I don't think there was, I actually knew, but just the philosophical approach to the work is, is what was brought to light.
So your understanding so far is that this would be like another similar, like unfunded mandate?
Nothing is articulated initially as an unfunded mandate, but it was coming. I, I think, uh, I might be professionally scarred from what we experienced with language arts and my confidence level maybe has waned, knowing how that proceeded.
Yeah, just to be clear, I think this has been mentioned several times, that, you know, the district is already doing Act twenty things before it was cool in the legislature. Um, the, the, the stress comes in when you require things without sending any funding along and then threatening the potential for failure with a loss of funding, which is just absurd. So, okay.
Thank you, Dean, thank you for opportunity to attend.
Excellent, all right. Couple other general board updates I'll highlight here. None of this I remembered on my own, so thanks to Jen for remembering all of this. On October third, we have a ribbon cutting to open the health clinic at the central office here at Verona. Um, hopefully we can all make it there. Sounds like, uh, a pretty neat endeavor, I'm excited about that. Um, October ninth, we have the Greater Dayton County Consortium meeting, this is in.
Madison.
It's in, it's in Madison this time, awesome. All right, um, we've been fairly well represented there in the past, so hopefully we can attend that. And then coming up in the beginning of December is the SLATE Educational Conference, um, in the Dells, also focused on AI this year. And I don't know how many people are attending. I'm attending, should be awesome.
We have three, I think we have three board members. And team, Jason, Jason Silver, five, yeah, five. They have five, five senators.
That'll be great. It's always great as a board member to be able to go to like these purely educational things so that we don't ask nonsensical questions, which I'm good at. All right, does anybody else have anything else for board updates? Spectacular. Moving on, uh, superintendent consent agenda. Uh, if you haven't yet, visit over the superintendent consent agenda. And if you have any questions, now is the time. All right, hearing none, the superintendent's consent agenda is approved as presented. Uh, the board consent agenda similarly, please look over the board consent agenda. Are there any questions there? Pretty lead in this month. Hearing none, the board's consent agenda is approved. Future dates, um, October sixth is our regular board meeting here, October twentieth is the board meeting, November third, and November seventeenth are our next board meetings. With that being said, I'll accept a motion to adjourn. A motion. All right, Meredith, a second, second from Corby, all those in favor?
Eye.
Signify with an eye.
Eye.
Any opposed? Vote with your feet. Smile, I'm gonna ask people in camera.